Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Headstones on these roaming hills, across that beautiful cemetery underneath those oak trees. And I glanced around and I looked and there was a black hearse sitting there, and a family gathered around. And I wondered if it was a young lad that was just laid to rest, or maybe it was the words of General MacArthur, "Old soldiers never die, they just fade, fade away." The next day, I pulled off at that exit and wandered through that cemetery, and there were a lot of fresh graves there of a lot of old soldiers. Shall we pray? Our Father and God, we come before you this morning and we give thanks for it. We give thanks for every day you give us, whether it's raining or the sun is shining. All the blessings come from your hand and we thank you for that. We thank you for all who are gathered here today, for this board, this commission, and for the work we'll do, and for those that support us and those that receive the benefits of the work we do. We pray for each and every one and we give thanks for that. We thank thee for those that serve, whether they be in the local police or fire department that serve in our behalf and are willing to risk all for our good. We thank thee for those that serve in the armed forces, those that may be in the dark of night on some battleship in some foreign sea, or some soldier in some desert land. Lord, we ask you to be with each and all of those as well. Now bless the work we do, and all this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda this morning is public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing no public comment, I call on Commissioner Vaughn for consent agenda.
Yes, thank you Chair. I'll move the consent agenda, items A and B.
There's support.
Support.
With support by Commissioner VanderMullen. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
VanderMullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number seven on the agenda, resolutions. Call on Commissioner Voorhees for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this morning. I would like to move today's date, item number 63, the 2017 to 2021 grant for the prosecutor's office.
Okay, we have motions or support.
Support.
Support by Commissioner VanderMullen. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move to amend Resolution 981663 to include the appropriation of the county general fund portion of the program, so that the second to the last paragraph would now read, "Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners accept and appropriate $140,000 from the MDHHS and $876,552 from the county general fund to the 2016-2017 special projects fund and..."
Okay, there is a motion to amend the original motion. Is there support?
Support.
We have the support by Commissioner VanderMullen. Any questions or comments on the motion, which is to amend the original motion?
Couldn't we just have an explanation?
Yes, I believe there was a language issue.
Because I know it was raised at the Finance Committee, probably a little bit of...
Mary Swanson will give us some background on the amendment this morning.
To be honest, we just slipped this amount from the action request when we were putting it together. As we went to the new financial management system in the five years, it just got left out of the action request language. This is existing programming, standard funding that is included in the budget. No new programming, no new money, it's all been planned for, but staff error, it got left out of the action request. But it is important to have it in there when we start the 10-1 budgets.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the amendment? Okay, yes, Commissioner.
By specifying the general fund appropriation right now, that sort of sets us in stone for the budget as it comes forward. So I'm gonna let Marvin explain this, I think, because there's two appropriation actions that take place. One to the special revenue fund that you are doing now, and then when you adopt the budget, that's the appropriation from the general fund. But I will let Marvin.
That's correct. This appropriation would give authorization to spend in this special project fund. This same amount is included in the general fund recommendation that you'll see in early next month, so it'll be appropriated in November. So it has to be appropriated twice, as Mary said. Once in the general fund, once in the special project fund, in order to have authorization to spend.
Any other questions? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So I assume as well, when the full budget comes in, if we conclude it shouldn't be $876, it should only be $800,000. We can make that adjustment then. Hypothetically.
If the contract allowed for that, yes, you could reduce that budget accordingly. Yes.
Okay, other questions on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we're just voting on the amendment. At this point, this is not a roll call vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, if we can discuss the full motion that's on the floor, is there any conversation regarding that motion? Okay, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Got them put.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
VanderMullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on, I now call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. I move the amendment to Resolution 981664. It's just a housekeeping item that will add $500,064 from the county general fund, which comes from the 2016-17 special projects fund.
Commissioner Ponstein, actually, could you just move the motion and then we'll get to the amendment? So, why don't we rephrase that?
Why are there so many amendments? Just two. I move Resolution 981664.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, Commissioner Jones. Okay.
Support.
With the support from Commissioner Mast, now I call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move to amend Resolution 981664 to include the appropriation of the county general fund portion of the program, so that the second to the last paragraph would now read, "Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners accept and appropriate $177,000 from the MDHHS and $500,064 from the county general fund to the 2016-17 special projects fund and..."
Okay, so we have another motion to amend the original motion. Is there support?
I'll support that.
We have a support from Commissioner VanderMullen. Is there discussion on the amendment for this? Commissioner Morgan?
Is this the same reason as stated before?
Yes.
And this was an accounting error?
No, no.
Explain this to me, because this is unusual. To have so many amendments on these resolutions.
Okay, well, we did get the information out to the board last evening, and there was, we had included the...
I didn't see it.
I understand, but we included the state portion, but because of the transfer and change to the new financial management system, as we were moving these things forward, we missed the general fund appropriation that we normally do provide for these types of funding requests. So it doesn't increase programs or services, it doesn't increase personnel costs. This is a standard appropriation that we do every year, and we just missed one portion of it, which was the general fund.
Any other questions on the amendment? Commissioner Bukowski.
Are these parts of what used to be our October 1 budget?
Yes.
So we used to take care of all of this with our October 1 budgets? And with the change, our new computer system failed us, at least a small amount.
Just a moment of transition for this year.
Just making sure.
Any other questions?
Since I didn't see my email since 18T, cut my wires yesterday.
And we've approved, we've approved this portion of the budget array. This is what we approved in, but starting at October 1. This is the budget that starts this coming fiscal year, October 1, '16 through September 17. I'm gonna ask Marvin to come up, because there is, we, I think you're almost right on that one. Because we appropriate July, or January 1 to December 31st. But the contract that we have to execute with the state is effective October 1. And that gets to your next question. We can make the changes yet, because we haven't approved the budget. Yeah, okay.
Marvin.
This is a reoccurring grant, so what happens is the first quarter, October to December, is funded in the 2016 general fund budget. The second to fourth quarters is funded out of the 2017 general fund budget. So the 2016 portion is already in the general fund. 2017 portion is what you'll be acting on in November.
Okay, any other questions regarding the amendment? Okay, seeing none. It is not a roll call vote to make this amendment and to put it through, so we'll go ahead and call that right now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, is there any discussion on the original motion made by Commissioner Ponstein? Okay, seeing none, this is another roll call vote.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
VanderMullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on, I now call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair. I move the amendment to Resolution 981664. It's just a housekeeping item that will add $500,064 from the county general fund, which comes from the 2016-17 special projects fund.
Commissioner Ponstein, actually, could you just move the motion and then we'll get to the amendment? So, why don't we rephrase that?
Why are there so many amendments? Just two. I move Resolution 981664.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, Commissioner Jones. Okay.
Support.
With the support from Commissioner Mast, now I call on Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I move to amend Resolution 981664 to include the appropriation of the county general fund portion of the program, so that the second to the last paragraph would now read, "Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners accept and appropriate $177,000 from the MDHHS and $500,064 from the county general fund to the 2016-17 special projects fund and..."
Okay, so we have another motion to amend the original motion. Is there support?
I'll support that.
We have a support from Commissioner VanderMullen.
Is there discussion on the amendment for this?
Commissioner Morgan?
Is this the same reason as stated before?
Yes.
And this was an accounting error?
No, no.
Explain this to me, because this is unusual. To have so many amendments on these resolutions.
Okay, well, we did get the information out to the board last evening, and there was, we had included the...
I didn't see it.
I understand, but we included the state portion, but because of the transfer and change to the new financial management system, as we were moving these things forward, we missed the general fund appropriation that we normally do provide for these types of funding requests. So it doesn't increase programs or services, it doesn't increase personnel costs. This is a standard appropriation that we do every year, and we just missed one portion of it, which was the general fund.
Any other questions on the amendment? Commissioner Bukowski.
Are these parts of what used to be our October 1 budget?
Yes.
So we used to take care of all of this with our October 1 budgets? And with the change, our new computer system failed us, at least a small amount.
Just a moment of transition for this year.
Just making sure.
Any other questions?
Since I didn't see my email since 18T, cut my wires yesterday.
And we've approved, we've approved this portion of the budget array. This is what we approved in, but starting at October 1. This is the budget that starts this coming fiscal year, October 1, '16 through September 17. I'm gonna ask Marvin to come up, because there is, we, I think you're almost right on that one. Because we appropriate July, or January 1 to December 31st. But the contract that we have to execute with the state is effective October 1. And that gets to your next question. We can make the changes yet, because we haven't approved the budget. Correct.
Marvin.
This is a reoccurring grant, so what happens is the first quarter, October to December, is funded in the 2016 general fund budget. The second to fourth quarters is funded out of the 2017 general fund budget. So the 2016 portion is already in the general fund. 2017 portion is what you'll be acting on in November.
Okay, any other questions regarding the amendment? Okay, seeing none. It is not a roll call vote to make this amendment and to put it through, so we'll go ahead and call that right now. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, is there any discussion on the original motion made by Commissioner Ponstein? Okay, seeing none, this is another roll call vote.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
VanderMullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion carries. Just wanted to note that Mary Holland-Rake had to run out for a meeting in Lansing, and so we appreciate Jerry Shaya stepping in and completing her responsibilities this morning. Yeah. Next up on the agenda, I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 66, the Title 4D Cooperative Reimbursement Grant for the Prosecutor's Office for financial year 2017 through 2021.
Support.
We have a motion and a support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, this is another roll call vote. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So I assume as well, when the full budget comes in, if we conclude it shouldn't be $876, it should only be $800,000. We can make that adjustment then. Hypothetically.
If the contract allowed for that, yes, you could reduce that budget accordingly. Yes.
Okay, other questions on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we're just voting on the amendment. At this point, this is not a roll call vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, if we can discuss the full motion that's on the floor, is there any conversation regarding that motion? Okay, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Got them put.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
VanderMullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on, I now call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the amendment to Resolution 981664. It's just a housekeeping item that will add $500,064 from the county general fund, which comes from the 2016-17 special projects fund.
Commissioner Ponstein, actually, could you just move the motion and then we'll get to the amendment? So, why don't we rephrase that?
Why are there so many amendments? Just two. I move Resolution 981664.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. So I assume as well, when the full budget comes in, if we conclude it shouldn't be $876, it should only be $800,000. We can make that adjustment then.
If the contract allowed for that, yes, you could reduce that budget accordingly. Yes.
Okay, other questions on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, we're just voting on the amendment. At this point, this is not a roll call vote, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, if we can discuss the full motion that's on the floor, is there any conversation regarding that motion? Okay, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Got them put.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
VanderMullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Shivas.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion carries. Just wanted to note that Mary Holland-Rake had to run out for a meeting in Lansing, and so we appreciate Jerry Shaya stepping in and completing her responsibilities this morning. Yeah. Next up on the agenda, I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 66, the Title 4D Cooperative Reimbursement Grant for the Prosecutor's Office for financial year 2017 through 2021.
Support.
We have a motion and a support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, this is another roll call vote.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
VanderMullen.
Yes.
Talan.
So it's not, you're not making independent decisions about who to arrest, who to not, initially. It has to be a bench warrant issued by a judge somewhere.
Right. Michigan law requires a bench warrant for arrests. If somebody fails to appear for show cause contempt hearing for not paying their support, they have every chance to resolve the matter before that hearing's scheduled. When they don't show up for that hearing, the law says we have to issue a warrant, the judge signs it. However, we're giving, and through the court, through the court, we're giving the deputies a lot of discretion to try to resolve those warrants. We don't want to parade a bunch of poor people before the court.
So, once you have the bench warrant, and then you follow up, what are the options in your exercise? Do you pick them up and bring them in, or what, your officers are then able to go out and just negotiate with them for some resolution?
We call them on the phone, we reach out. Our deputies are really making an effort to try to make a first contact. They're, they're not uniformed, they don't look armed, and they'll even talk to family members to try to draw these people in. We have a new full-time program called the Responsible Parent Program, where we can give priority to people with bench warrants, to get them into the program, to find jobs. We prefer not to arrest somebody if we don't have to.
So do you then go back to the, if you conclude not to arrest them, to do something else, do you have to go back to the judge and say, all right, I know you said go arrest this person, but we decided to do this?
No, we, we, they have a stipulated order that the deputies and the pair of support can sign that would resolve the issue, and our judge is on board with that.
Ah, okay, okay.
So there'll be a court order saying, okay, the warrant's been resolved in this fashion.
Got it.
And we're giving a lot of folks an opportunity just to come in on their own, or the deputy will even transport the person to our office instead of the jail to try to work things out. Maybe they need a support review, maybe they need to be put in the Responsible Parent Program to find a job or overcome some other barriers, so we're really working with them.
So as a rest, then, the action of last resort, after none of these other efforts have been successful?
Yeah, our goal is to resolve the warrant without arrest, but there're gonna have to be some arrests.
And that's principally because someone simply resists all of the efforts?
Correct, correct. I mean, we, we held an amnesty event in the inner city at LifeQuest in August, and we gave everyone an opportunity to come in without fear of arrest, to talk to their caseworker. We resolved one hundred and fifty-seven warrants, but a lot of folks fear us, and so we're really trying to reinvent our image and to draw people in and note that they can talk to us, and we don't want to arrest if we don't have to.
Any other questions or comments for Dan regarding the motion? Okay, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion carries. Just want to note that Mary Holland Ray had to run out for a meeting in Lansing, and so I appreciate Jerry Shaya stepping in and completing her responsibilities this morning. Next up on the agenda, I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution sixty-six, the Title IV D Cooperative Reimbursement Grant for the prosecutor's office for financial year two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one.
We have a motion and a support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, this is another roll call vote.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Chivas.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on, item number nine on the agenda is reports. Do we have any commissioner reports this morning? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our last airport board meeting, Kurt Pollan, who's in charge of our fundraising effort at the airport, that includes that forty-five million dollar gateway transition project, he reported that in the private sector, we, they have raised all, about seventeen million in the private sector for that, and with the twenty-five million from the airport, we're real close to hitting our goal of forty-five million, so a lot of support out there in the private sector for this project, and I think things are going along quite well.
Excellent, thank you. Any other commissioner report this morning? Commissioner Bolkowski?
Can I ask a question on that, Richard?
I'm sure.
I mean, what, who, I mean, who's contributing seventeen million dollars, and why, I mean, why would they contribute seventeen million dollars to the airport as opposed to, like, the children's hospital for a new wing?
Well, some of that is, you know, what we're doing is reaching out to the community, and they have some advertising capabilities there, and they want to be part of the airport because they think there's a lot of traffic there, so.
Right.
Our biggest lead gift came from Altacore Corporation, but we have several million-dollar gifts. I'll get you a list.
Yeah.
Of exactly who's donating, and...
Okay.
But the airport is coming with twenty-five million from its...
From revenue.
From airport improvement funds, so.
Excellent. And are most communities, though, we, they, like to say, would be tax revenue, that would be that other twenty million dollars?
It's fees.
No, no, I know that fees for the twenty-five, but then what we're raising from the private sector, would other community, how would other communities fund that? Through taxes?
Taxes or bond.
Okay. Bond. But then the bonds get paid off by taxes or fees, but...
Yeah, it's pretty unique to this area and this region.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Just to kind of respond to that, the fact that we're doing this is very unique and very unusual, and the business community sees the value of what we're doing and what's going on out there, and so we're pretty proud of the fact that we can, in this community, reach out and, and get, get that kind of money. So that's all part of the authority piece, and so that's a great thing, it's going well, and you're gonna really be impressed with stuff.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to take a moment and give an update on the fire commission. I chair that, and Commissioner Antor also sits on that with me. We have a meeting tomorrow at eight-thirty at the road commission, and we are in the process of continuing to dive through our December goals of reviewing the entire commission, its benefits, how it's structured, and I just wanted to let the board know that this is ongoing. It was a set of goals set by the board last December, and we are actively going through a process, and Kell Brinks has been phenomenal at helping to lead that, as we peel this back and dive through it, since, since a lot of pieces hadn't been updated since the late seventies.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of items reported from Lake Shore Regional Entity. First, this afternoon, we'll be meeting to consider for approval of budget for next year, which would be approximately two hundred and sixty million region-wide in revenues. We anticipate that will be approved, but until we have the public hearing, we won't know for sure. Second is, we did host a forum yesterday for purposes of constituencies within the region to begin to talk about some strategies and how to respond to the new Section 298 language, which essentially calls upon, we think, the public health, behavioral health community to start looking at ways of how they suggest we reinvent and redo what we do. That's a, that's a huge challenge, but we've started that conversation at the LRA level. We brought in a number of our key providers, brought in the board, the executive director from MDHHS, Nick Lyons was there to participate with that, so it's, it was a good meeting, a good conversation, not the end of it by any means, but we got started.
Thank you for your report and for all your work on that issue. Commissioner Mast?
I just wanted to follow up a little bit, or talk, sometime back, I mentioned that our Network One Eighty office, administrative office, and IT offices will be moving, and that'll, that'll take place in October, early October, so that's moving ahead, and so there's a lot of programs, new programs, starting at the six, or seven ninety Fuller Avenue address, some of the things that I also mentioned. So our Network One Eighty board is considering submitting an application to become a Section 298 provider, so we're trying to kind of combine that with the LRA, and it was a very excellent meeting that Stan facilitated and coordinated. Discussion is continuing.
Thank you for your report. Any other commissioner reports? Commissioner Vonck?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You all heard about the methane gas issue at the Kentwood landfill, the old closed-and-cap landfill. Our board, DPW, had a complete report on that yesterday. The methane gas is confined to the landfill property, but we're monitoring in and around that property at this time, and we're continuing to monitor it. Issues could evolve as the houses are closed up for fall and winter, and so we're keeping our eyes on that, and it's under control.
Thank you. Other commissioner reports. Commissioner Talan?
Thank you, Chair. With all the time off last month, I forgot that there was a DDA meeting, and I didn't bring notes to report on what happened there, but I did want to acknowledge that next, our next board meeting, my understanding is that Tim Kelly from the DGRI will be here for a special order of business, talking partly about tip things in general, but also about the redesign of the, potential redesign of the Calder Plaza, so I won't be here, I'll be at the State of Michigan Homelessness Conference, but I think you'll enjoy that presentation from Tim, so thank you.
Other commissioner reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to Commissioner miscellaneous, item number ten on the agenda. Commissioner miscellaneous, Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Schroll. I know there's a lot of different avenues for entertainment, and I never want to tell people what they kind of can't do, but I drive the past few weeks into the meetings. It's a little bit nicer now that the gallery showcase has been torn down. I'm certainly looking forward to the building that's gonna replace that and kind of change that entrance to the city.
Commissioner Bolkowski?
Yeah, just wanted to thank everybody for your thoughts and condolences and prayers for my mom's passing last month, so just a quick thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to recognize the medical examiner report, and just a quick moment to highlight what great work they've done in the gift of life of Michigan in the organ and tissue donation area. I just think that we have so many wonderful departments and areas where people work hard, and this is just a part that I thought was worth a mention and a highlight, because it really does help, help the community, so thanks.
Commissioner Brevi?
Yeah, back in August, on a Friday night, I had the opportunity to ride with Deputy Danenberg from the sheriff's department, and I did the seven a, or seven PM to seven AM shift. I wasn't planning on doing the entire shift, maybe only till like two AM, but things kind of get interesting after that time, but I was very impressed with Deputy Danenberg, the way he handled the variety of situations that kind of came across. We dealt with people that had mental illness and wanted to commit suicide, and also we dealt with people playing Pokemon Go that were looking suspicious, and then finally, we just took one more trip around the area, which just happened to be in Commissioner Coleman's district, and we were able to find a drunk driver, and so I got to see the process from, you know, the beginning all the way, you know, going...
[laughter]
It wasn't, it wasn't Commissioner Coleman, but I got to see, you know, the beginning, you know, when an arrest is made, you know, booking down at the jail and all things that go with it. So throughout the whole time, Deputy Danenberg did a great job. Everyone who we met, the other deputies handled every situation very well, and so I'm just proud of our department and, you know, happy for all the training that they've received, and happy for the opportunity that night, so thanks.
Welcome to the old dark thirty club.
Any other Commissioner miscellaneous this morning?
I have one little housekeeping thing you should have received in your boxes at some point, the cards that you can pass out to your constituents to remind them to apply for the various different boards and commissions. The deadline to apply for those is September thirtieth, so really appreciate all your efforts to get the word out in the community. It's always a good problem to have when we have more interested and qualified individuals who apply for those positions than we have positions available, though that doesn't make our work any easier as we move into the next phase of the interviews and all the work we have ahead of that, so just wanted to remind you. And if you didn't get those little cards, then see Pam, I'm sure she's got more of them. I believe also you should have gotten a letter from Chair Solfeld that, for you to sign up for any of the boards and commissions that you're interested in serving on for the next year, so make sure you get that filled out and turned in as well. So with that being said, and if there's no more Commissioner miscellaneous, I will look to Commissioner Vonck one more time for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adjourn, subject to the call of Chair, to Thursday, September twenty-two, two thousand sixteen, at eight-thirty.
So moved.
Okay, we have a question, Commissioner Morgan? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Here.
Very good, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are Kent County!
We are Kent County!
We are Kent County! Oh, yeah.